Good afternoon and welcome to our last meeting of the year. It's cold outside and Christmas is near and we're looking forward to all the, these summer festivities. Our lead us in the invocation tonight, uh, place of allegiance, we give, lead by Councilman Steve Curvin. Please rise. Father, we, we come to you this evening to give you thanks for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon our city and our community. We ask that you let this policy make in board, this council make wise and just decisions as we are halfway through the year, uh, our calendar year and, and toward this fiscal, this year. But to help us to finish the year strong. And we also ask that those of us that are in our organization who braid the temperatures and who are put in homes way at times, we ask that you keep all of them safe and away from home. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. The way of allegiance to the fire, United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was absolutely the best place of allegiance we've had. Oh, you're learning. Thank you. We've, we've got a special recognition today for all these guys in the green jerseys. They're the Jets and we have the, the privilege of having them in our, um, in our council chambers. I understand you guys had a successful season, seventeen and four. Is that about right? Okay. City champs and you play in the NFL playoffs next weekend, right? But, um, one of our own, Councilman Tony Stewart is the, uh, one of the fearless leaders of this troop. And I'm gonna ask Tony to get up and say a few words about these young men. Tony?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, what I'd like to do is just ask for my assistant coaches to come up and with me, uh, Mark Clary, uh, Billy Fant, if you could come up. Uh, like the mayor said, um, we were the greater Anderson County Football League champions this year. Um, we played a lot of games. Our city league consists of ten games. We finished second in our league at, at a record of nine and one, but what that does is, uh, put your seedings for the end of the season tournament. And at the, when we had our end of the season tournament, we won the championship. So we, we wound up being the league champions. Um, we played a lot of games this year. I know our parents, uh, want some reimbursement for all the mileage that we, uh, drove, because we drove a lot of miles. Some games, we played two games on one day. And, um, I can remember we played at Pendleton High School at ten o'clock one Saturday morning. Then it had to be at Abbeyville High School at five thirty in the afternoon. So these kids really put forth a lot of effort. Couldn't have did it without the parents, you know, uh, thanks to all the parents, because these young men don't have driver's licenses. It's up to the parents to get them to practice and get them to the games and couldn't have did it without them. Um, again, one of my other coaches, uh, Coach Tracy Cheatham, uh, come on down, coach. And, um, you know, we've had a, a real great season. Um, but one of the things that I can't express enough, not only being champions on the football field, these young men that you, that you're gonna see when they come up here in a minute and tell you who they are and tell you where they go to school at, they're champions in the classroom. Thirteen out of the eighteen players on our team made the A.B. honor roll. Um, we had... The other kids had about one C on their report card and they were very close to the honor roll, but they promised me they was gonna make it this time. So, uh, but again, uh, you know, we stress, you can't get in trouble in school. You, you gotta keep your grades up in order to play football. And these young men are not only champions and leaders on the football field, but they're also leaders and champions in their classrooms. And again, that just goes, um, to the, um, uh, the greatness that each one of these young men has. Um, what I like to do is ask for all the players to come up. Come on up, Peanut. Y'all come on up. And then, then we're gonna come around. I want, I want everybody to see who they are, tell them, tell you, tell everybody what your name is, you're on camera. Everybody can see you at home. Tell them what school you go to and then just come on down to the end of the line.
My name is DeMarion Yergin and I go to Belton Elementary School.
My name is Navajay Carson and I go to Midway Elementary.
My name is Khalil Young. I go to New Prospect Elementary.
My name is Dakin Cowan and I go to Vrenas, Vrenas Academy of Communications and Technology.
My name is Christopher and I go to, I go to Vrenas Academy of Communications and Technology.
My name is Tracy Cheatham. I go to Net Forest of Innovation.
My name is Amir Danny and I go to Midway.
My name is Cabral Moss and I go to Vrenas Academy of Communications.
My name is Hoda Fuddah. I go to White Hill Elementary School.
My name is Tyler Puckett and I go to White Hill Elementary School.
My name is Cameron Jones and I go to Midway Elementary.
My name is Billy Ray Moss and I go to Concord.
My name is Noah Hamby and I go to Calhoun Academy of the Arts.
My name is Quavion Thomas and I go to Net Forest Elementary.
My name is Tyler Daniel Cleary and I go to Midway Elementary.
My name is Wilfrid and I go to New Prospect Elementary.
Again, it just goes to show that it doesn't matter what school you go to, a group of young men can get together for three or four months and come together and bond. It don't matter what side of town that you live on, where you grew up, you know, what neighborhood you're from. But it just shows what a group of young men can do when they get together, become friends. And we were a family, uh, we started in August. We just finished up about two or three weeks ago. I think the biggest disappointment all season was, is not being in the Christmas parade yesterday. They really look forward to being in the Christmas parade yesterday. That's what they played hard for all year. So hopefully, uh, if it goes through next Sunday, if, if we have one, they'll get to be in it. But again, um, uh, like, uh, I'd like to take another second of my time just to say I got one special young man that I would like to, uh, bring out about his academics and that's Navajay Carson. Navajay, hold your hand up. Navajay is a Duke TIP scholar. And what that means is that, uh, he excelled all the state standards for, uh, the pass test. So he's gonna be taking classes from Duke University. So, uh... Again, with that, I, if any of my coaches like to say anything. Again, just like to, again, um, uh, thank each and every one of these young men for coming up here. Thank, thank all my coaches and, um, uh, give them another round of applause. Most important, forgot, and I see a couple of them here, we couldn't have did it without our cheerleaders. We have cheerleaders, come on up. Come on up. I said, I think we've got three. We didn't have that many. We had about six or seven, but these six or seven or four or five, they cheered harder than any twelve cheerleaders any other, uh, team had. So I would like for them to say their name and what school they go to.
I am Anaria Carson and I go to Midway Elementary.
My name is Jordan Johnson and I go to New Prospect STEM Academy.
My name is Genesis Cunningham and I go to New Prospect STEM Academy.
It used to say, it used to say two thousand thirteen, but they got so happy, they wrote the two off before we won the championship. Thanks, guys.
It's hard, isn't it?
Congratulations. You did such a good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Good job.
You guys did a great job. Very proud of you. Thank you, guys. Hey, proud of you.
Good job.
Proud of you.
Congratulations. Good job, buddy.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I know you, man.
Ah, congratulations. Good to see you and congratulations. Congratulations, Steve.
Congratulations. Good job.
Congratulations.
That's good play.
Congratulations. Great. Proud of you, guys.
Hey, Billy, it's good to see you again. How you been? Congratulations.
Thank you so much for what you did. Thank you for what you did. You guys are fabulous. Thank you.
Good job. Appreciate what you did.
You're nice.
Down there, welcome to go home.
Now, you guys are welcome to sail. You can go home. Either one you wanna do.
Okay. We'll move on, um, to a special presentation. I feel sorry for whoever's following that group, but especially in regards to our comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year twenty, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, um, Green, Finley and Horton, our accountants. And I'm gonna kinda tee it up to Linda and she'll introduce, I guess.
Thank you, Mayor. It is a hard act to follow, but what we do have to tell you is a, a great financial report. You'll hear from David Phillips with Green, Finley and Horton tonight. And I have to tell you, this is, will be no surprise as to some of you who were on the finance committee. Uh, Dr. Thompson, Mr. Curvin, um, Mr. Anderson and the mayor heard this, a preview of this last week and got the good news that we have an unmodified or unqualified, as we used to call it, opinion, which is the best opinion that we can get. But I think this report you will hear will attest to the fact that the city is in sound fiscal position and, um, have to give kudos to our staff, Peggy Maxwell, our finance director, as well as, um, Margot Martin and Kristy Jablonsky, who are in the audience with us tonight. So, uh, without anything else, I'd like to turn it over to David Phillips to give you the good news.
All right. That is a hard act to follow, no doubt about it. Um, so I'll go quick, you know. Um, as you know, it's been our custom each year, uh, we try to sit down usually late November, first of December, and kinda go back through, uh, the overall, uh, financial results for this past year. Um, you know, I, I did wanna mention to you, you know, it's easy for us to come here and take, you know, fifteen minutes, but there's a lot of work that goes into putting this together. This is a, a pretty thick document. And when you look at the back of it, this is a, a comprehensive annual financial report. You have ten years of history in your statistical tables. And that just doesn't happen overnight, but it really gives you the, the council, especially new council members, a, a good bit of information and history as you join council to kinda see how things have trended over time. And so again, I, I wanna thank the staff for the amount of time that's been put into this. Um, you know, it, it takes weeks and months to get this to where you see it today. So I don't want you to think it just happens overnight. Uh, but as been our custom again, we put together a, a really brief PowerPoint, because trying to go through this large report would take a long time. Uh, it would be really, uh, very laborious to go through. So if you don't mind, bear with me and we'll walk through, uh, this PowerPoint presentation. Let me make sure I figure out how this thing works. Okay? Let me try this one. All right. Uh, wanted to look again, it's just some quick highlights. Um, you have the best opinion you can get. Um, as Linda mentioned, the old term was unqualified. Uh, the new term, uh, because of some new auditing standards is unmodified. Supposed to be clear. Doesn't that make it clear, huh? Unmodified opinion. Um, your general fund, the fund balance decreased one point six million. And that would be a lower mean if you didn't look at the next statement. Uh, primarily due to the use of bond proceeds from the TIF bonds issued in the prior year. Remember, last year, the fund balance went up, but it's because we didn't spend some of those bond monies from issuances. This year, we went about spending that money on those construction projects, so that general fund balance went down. Uh, you received the GFOA Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting now for the eighteenth year in a row. And so that's a, a long, uh, long tradition there that y'all been able to continue on. Um, the opinion, we always like to remind everybody that, you know, it's the city's responsibility to have good controls. Uh, these are your financial statements. If they were our financials, we really couldn't audit something that we did ourselves. Uh, again, our responsibility is to give you reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance. Um, absolute would mean we have to look at every single transaction that took place. But what we do is we look at those material transactions, those significant transactions. We look at populations of transactions. We take samples. And if we look at a sample and we see that the payroll transactions in that sample are, are being processed properly, then we can statistically extrapolate that to the remaining population with degrees of certainty. So the good thing is, um, you've got the best opinion you can receive, which is an unmodified opinion. And I will say that again at the end, so hopefully three times saying it, the one takeaway will be is what the new, uh, best name for an opinion, uh, is going forward. All right. Let's look at your fund balance. Again, we mentioned how your total fund balance decreased one point six million from eight point two to six point seven. Uh, this is primarily due to spending bond proceeds of nine hundred and twelve thousand, the use of prior year appropriated fund balance of three hundred and fifty one thousand for fire grants, and then also you had some higher utilities and fuel prices this year. Your non-spendable fund balance, uh, was a hundred and sixty two thousand. Those are amounts that you've spent for prepaid insurance for inventories and they will be depleted or used over time. You had restricted fund balance of about sixteen thousand dollars for victims advocate. And still, you had about two hundred and fifty eight thousand, uh, in unspent bond proceeds that will be used this year and, and, and the coming months. Uh, that, all, we also had a, a signed fund balance, the very bottom there, of thirty thousand dollars. If you remember when you were putting together your fiscal year two thousand and fourteen budget, you used about thirty thousand dollars, uh, to, uh, to balance that budget for two thousand and fourteen. You used some of your fund balance, uh, for two thousand and fourteen. So now that we looked at the various parts of your fund balance that have, uh, that's either restricted or committed or assigned and so forth, we're gonna look at the part that's unassigned. That means there's no constraints on it. It's available for your, uh, for your designation. Um, the unassigned fund balance is six point two million, which is twenty-two percent of your two thousand and thirteen actual expenditures. It is about twenty-five percent of your two thousand and fourteen budgeted expenditures. The GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, it's kinda like the bible of governments. It recommends a minimum of two months. So as you can see, you're in good stead to that. There's a little bit of volatility here and one of the things we've been talking about with management, management is considering is, you know, you have some construction projects that sometimes go through your general fund and so then you get these bump in expenditures. Think about what you had last year with the green space project and so forth. Well, that's why it's only twenty-two percent of your two thousand and thirteen expenditures, 'cause you had some higher expenditures in your general fund. Well, next year, you don't have those. And so it makes, it look like your unassigned is jumping up, but in reality, it's your expenditure levels are down. So one of the things that we're looking at, maybe contemplating for the future, is creating a new fund called the Capital Projects Fund. So it'll be a separate fund and then as you have projects, I gotta make sure we don't let this thing, uh, start on us. Um, uh, we will transfer money into this Capital Projects Fund for various construction projects that you have. And what would be nice about that is it will keep your general fund expenditures left with your normal operating expenditures going forward. It won't have those fluctuations. If you had a big project in the general fund, uh, you would be able to kinda pull those projects out going forward and they would be in the Capital Projects Fund. So that's something that's gonna be contemplated in coming years. Okay. Um, why do we wanna have a fund balance? Well, remember, cash flows are pretty cyclical in some of them. Your property taxes, though, those, uh, bills go out late September, early October. You collect most of those real property taxes starting in December, January, February, and then there are not anymore of those. And so you have to build up enough of a kitty to carry you to the next property tax cycle. Um, it helps you with significant emergencies and unanticipated expenditures. What if you had some major storm come through and storm damage and you needed to respond quickly? It's good to have some significant fund balance available. Uh, flexibility for discretionary funding needs. What if you need to buy a fire truck? And you're like, you know, maybe we can borrow half of it, but, you know, let's use half of our own monies. Uh, so we don't have to borrow the full cost. It gives you discretion, uh, flexibility there. Um, it gives you better rates. Uh, when you go out to issue debt, if you remember, um, you refunded a whole bunch of your water and sewer bonds last year, you got some really good rates. You had some significant debt service reductions because they've seen a trend of y'all keeping a stable fund balance over time. Um, it helps you, uh, to cover potential shortfalls from the state, you know, local aid to government. That formula could change every year on you. You never know. So you need to be able to have some cushion there to protect yourself. And again, we're still in kind of uncertain economic times. And so it's always better to have some cushion there to protect you. All right. Well, let's look at your general fund revenues. Um, they were a total of twenty-four point two million, uh, for two thousand and thirteen, of which twelve point three million were from property taxes, seven point four million from business licenses and building permits, one point four million from, you know, in prisoner per diem, uh, point seven million from sales and services, and about two point four million from all your other sources. So that kinda makes up, uh, the various components of your revenues. Uh, this was, uh, ended up being about a hundred thousand dollar increase from the prior year and again, primarily in the licenses and permits area. Uh, generally, just from our, uh, experience with a lot of our other clients, we're seeing a probably about anywhere to about a three to six percent increase, a lot of our local governments. So you're on a little bit on the shorter side of that increase this year, uh, compared to some of the other governments we're seeing. Uh, and it all depends on how tourism you are oriented. If you have a lot of tourism, you're on the beach, you're gonna see on the high end of that range. If you're in the lower, less urban areas, you're gonna see on the low end of those ranges. Um, you had an increase over your budget, though, of five hundred thousand dollars, so two percent. Again, you budget kinda conservatively, but you came in higher in your property taxes. And then those growth revenues, like business licenses and permits, as, you know, as the economy picks up, people start building. As the economy picks up, people sell more from their stores, your business licenses go up. So we are seeing some, um, slight improvements there. Um, wanted to note to you that you had transfers into the general fund of two point seven million. Uh, those monies come from your utility funds for fee and lieu. And remember, you had a lot of money come in from the hospitality tax fund for some of those construction projects that were being funded out of the general fund. Uh, so again, uh, those were to cover, uh, the downtown park project primarily. Let's look at your expenditures. Your expenditures were twenty-eight point five million, of which seven million were general government, eleven point one million in public safety, five point three million in public works, one point four million in recreation, two million in non-departmental, and about one point seven in debt service, which is principal and interest. Um, this was a three million dollar increase from two thousand and twelve. If you looked at that, you would say, whoa, why are our expenditures up so much? And this is another push for thinking about this Capital Projects Fund. Um, you had construction costs of two point seven million for the downtown green space project. That makes those numbers go way up. And next year, guess what? They're gonna go on again. They should drop back down. But think about if you have to always remember what happened three years ago in our general fund that shot them up. It'd be better for us maybe to think about having a separate fund, then we don't have to remember all that history. Um, again, you did have a little bit of higher cost in your fuel and repair costs. And again, this is due to higher gas prices and again, just, uh, the city's aging fleet. Um, you were two hundred and sixty seven thousand over your budget on expenditures and this was primarily due to higher fuels and repair costs and a little bit in higher employee benefits. Remember, you know, salaries are the largest component, uh, and benefits, uh, for a city. And, you know, every year, health insurance usually is going up. The retirement system rates are going up. And so that's what's gonna always be a, a really struggle to come up with the monies to support those increases that are gonna happen regardless of whether you want them to or not. All right. Well, let's look at some of your other key funds. Um, let's look at your hospitality fee fund. The revenues there were two point one nine in two thousand and thirteen. They were up about four percent over the prior year, uh, again, due to an improving economy. We've been seeing somewhere around five to ten percent, uh, depending on where you are in the state. Expenditures, which also included your transfer out, remember, we talked about some of those transfers going to your general fund to, to fund some of that downtown, uh, park project. Um, they were approximately four point seven million this year versus two point seven three in the prior year. This increase was largely due to money spent on phase two of the Recreation Master Plan, also the downtown green space project and on the Stevens, uh, Street project. So that's where that four point seven five went, uh, were on those projects. You had a net decrease in your fund balance of approximately two point five six million in two thousand and thirteen, which leaves you a fund balance of approximately one point six five million. Now, of that one point six five million, approximately six hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars of it is still that unspent bond proceeds. Remember that special obligation bond from last year? You haven't spent it all up yet. In addition, you have about nine hundred and ninety four thousand, which are your hospitality tax revenues that have come in that you just haven't allocated or spent yet. That, those two together come back to that remaining fund balance at the end of the year. All right. Well, let's look at your sewer and water utility funds, your enterprise funds there. Um, your sewer fund had a change in net position, uh, actually a decrease of six hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars compared to eighteen in the prior year. Um, some of the reasons why, your revenues decreased pretty significantly, seven hundred and thirty nine thousand. And remember, we've kinda had a really mild rainy, you know, spring and summer. And when you have a lot of rain, people don't need, you know, as much sewer and water. Uh, and so those revenues have decreased accordingly. Your sewer operating expenses increased approximately two percent from the prior year, mainly to a full year's worth of depreciation on the Rocky River wastewater treatment plant. Also, uh, you're, uh, just as a point of note, is that your interest expense decreased, uh, some this year by about three hundred and twenty five thousand, because you refunded those bonds last year. And you got some of that benefit this year. Uh, remember, uh, each of your utility funds, I shouldn't say each, your water and sewer, um, here, the sewer transferred six hundred and twenty thousand dollars to your general fund in lieu of property taxes. Because if this was a, a corporate or a public utility, they would have to pay you property taxes. They would have to pay you a business license. So what your practice has always been is we're gonna treat them and charge them the same fee that we would charge a regular business out there. And it's been the same number for a long time. So it's roughly about five percent of their revenues. We, we transfer over six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, from the sewer fund to the general fund to cover the ongoing operating costs of the general government. Now, let's look at your water fund. The water fund had a, an increase in fund, uh, net position of five hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. Um, water operating revenues did decrease about two hundred and two thousand, uh, from the prior year. And again, this is due to the, uh, the strong rains in the spring and the summer. Um, the water operating expenses increased about five percent or two hundred and eighty six thousand. Um, purchase water costs from the Anderson Regional Joint Water System increased about two percent um, due to the purchase of additional water for the first quality plant. You also had a number of legal matters that you were having to defend. And that increased some, some of your professional costs, uh, this past year. Now, some of that, of course, all those, um, increases there were offset by the fact that you refunded that debt and you got some interest savings, uh, this, uh, this year. Um, here also, just to note, you transferred five hundred and twenty one thousand to the general fund in lieu of property taxes and franchise fees, very similar to what we just talked about, uh, with the sewer fund. All right. Um, back about in two thousand and two, two thousand... All right, back about in 2002, 2003, the GASB issued a new pronouncement called GASB 34. And what they wanted to do was, in your financial statements, is to create a set of financials that were on the same basis of accounting as corporate America, that would have all of your assets, all of your liabilities, so that you could be compared to BB&amp;T, that you could be compared to Ryobi if you needed to. So on this basis of accounting, you have total assets of 208.2 million, but look where most of them are. 167.7 million are in your property, plant, and equipment, your capital assets. 27.4 million are in your cash and investments, and about 13.1 million in receivables and other assets. You also, on these statements, remember, to, a lot of times, to buy capital assets, to buy property, plant, and equipment, you incur debt and you pay it off over time. Here, you had long-term obligations of 126.2 million. And then you had other accounts payable, accrued salaries and payroll and liabilities of about 5.7 million. You take your assets minus your liabilities, and that's your net position, your equity. And there, you had 76.3 million. The real key one there is the unrestricted number, which is 13.3 million. On these government-wide statements, because we're adding your property, plant, and equipment, we also depreciate it over its estimated useful life. And so in those expense numbers, there's 6.3 million of non-cash depreciation. It's an expense, but you didn't have to pay money out right now for that cost. All right, wanted to look at some other key items. Your total capital assets were 167.7 million, an increase of 128,000 from the prior year. You had this year about 4.5 million in additions in your governmental activities, of which you see there, 1.9 million was related to the downtown green space project, Stevens Street, and the Westview Cemetery expansion. The Recreation Master Plan Phase Two resulted in about 1.7 million of those additions. And then you had purchases of vehicles and other equipment of about 931,000. So those are dealing with your governmental funds in general terms. Your capital asset additions for your utility funds or your business-type activities were about $2 million, of which about 1.2 million related to the Lindley Park stormwater. And then you had a purchase of a Vancon truck for 295, and then there were just a lot of other small equipment purchases. Again, we just wanted to highlight, you had depreciation expense of about 6.3 million, broken out of about 2 million and 4.3 million between your governmental and your business type. Remember, your business type are your utility funds. You had construction in progress at the end of the year of about 4.1 million. Those are projects that are still ongoing that most likely will be completed in fiscal year 2014. Let's look at your debt. Now, we looked at the assets. Now, here's the debt that usually was used to acquire a lot of the capital assets, the property, plant, and equipment. You had 126.2 million in outstanding debt and long-term obligations. This was a decrease of 4.9 million. Remember, last year, you pretty much restructured about every debt you had. Every debt either got refunded or you got concessions from the lender that lowered your rates. So this year was kind of a really nice, easy year. All you did was make principal and interest payments. So if you look there, your obligations decreased 2.3 million, but again, it was just normal scheduled principal payments. Your utility funds decreased about 2.6 million, again, just because of normal schedule. We didn't have any increases. We didn't have any new debt issues and so forth. For fiscal year 2014, your total debt service payments are estimated to be about 2.8 million for your governmental activities and 7.2 million for your business-type actions. So the total of about $10 million is what you're going to be paying out for fiscal year 2014. All right, this year, we implemented GASB 63. Everybody loves that. GASB stands for the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They set all the accounting rules for governments. No really significant changes. But if you notice, when we were talking about your, the GASB 34 statements over here, we talked about net position. Last year, we talked about net assets. So it's a change in term, change in term from net assets to net position. And there's a reason why. The GASB in 63 said, you know what, assets minus liabilities isn't sufficient anymore. We think the balance sheet needs to have some new elements. And now they created two new terms, deferred outflows and deferred inflows. You don't have any of them right now, but the new accounting equation is no longer assets minus liabilities gives you equity, it's assets plus deferred outflows minus liabilities minus deferred inflows equals net position. It's going to get more complicated, as you can see. It's supposed to be clear, but it's not going to be clear. The next point there is the clarity auditing standards kicked in this year. Not a big change for you, but if you looked at our opinion in this report, you would notice that every paragraph has a heading to it. And it's supposed to tell you what the next paragraph is about. That's to create clarity. That's debatable. But it is actually, makes it a little cleaner to look at. It does have a heading that says opinions. So you know the paragraph right below the opinion heading means that's what we've given our opinion on. And that's, you know, you would be able to find it more quickly. From an auditing accounting front, we don't really see any major changes right now down the road. That's just as of today, but things will change. From an accounting standpoint, we wanted to mention to you that GASB 65 has to be implemented next year. And what this is, you know, I talked to you about deferred outflows and deferred inflows. They're going to take certain of your assets and they're going to make those deferred outflows next year. They're going to take certain liabilities and they're going to make those deferred inflows. At the end of the day, they're just reshuffling the deck. The deck still adds back up to the same numbers. But they feel like there's certain assets that really don't qualify as an asset, they qualify better as a deferred outflow. And the same thing for a liability and a deferred inflow. To me, it's just going to get things really confusing. The next bullet point there, current and prospective bond issuance costs will be expensed when incurred. Right now, in your utility funds, you have about 2.6 million in bond issuance costs that will get written off immediately. They don't want to view that anymore as an asset. They're going to say, you know what, that's a cost of the transaction of issuing bonds. We don't want you to capitalize it and amortize it over the life of the bonds. We want you to immediately write it off. That's going to be a change that we will make next year. On a more substantive note, this next item, GASB 67 and GASB 68, it will have some major impact. And this is one that you really will need to stay a little bit more abreast on. What GASB 67 says, if you have your own pension plan, we're going to tighten your assumptions. We're not going to let you be as aggressive with your market rate of return. We're going to make you amortize unfunded liabilities quicker. And what more likely than not is that your liability related to your pension plan will go up. So that, you know, you have your own pension plan as it relates to your normal workers here. And so what I would expect, you know, on the old methodology, you were pretty much fully funded. You actually were a little overfunded. I wouldn't be surprised next year when you get your actuarial evaluation, you might be underfunded, just because of the change in methodology. So that will be one significant change, and that comes about because of GASB 67. Now, GASB 68 says, you know what, we don't care if you, if you're only, if you don't have your own plan. We also care if you participate in a multiple employer cost sharing plan, like the state of South Carolina. So they said, you know, even if you don't have your own plan, but if you participate in a cost sharing plan, if that state plan is underfunded, we're going to make you record your proportionate share of that liability on your books, starting in year 2015. So we're still a year and a half away, but this is a really radical change from the posture that they've ever taken. Because you're not legally or statutorily required to pay retirees, but they're taking the position that if the state plan is underfunded, who will ultimately pay? Won't it probably be the participating governments, they believe? You're going to have to kick in more money to make up that shortfall over time. And because you are, we should go ahead and recognize that liability today. So that's going to be a significant change. We've tried to go ahead and give you an estimate. Currently, we think it's going to be about 1.9 times your covered payroll. That liability right now is about, we estimate it to be about 11.8 million. Now, that won't affect your general fund. But you know, when we come back, let me flip back over here to this net asset statement. We'll record that liability right there in the liability section. And then over there in that unrestricted net position section, we're going to hit that for 11.8 million. All that unrestricted almost goes away instantaneously. So I have one client, their number is about 750 million. That's what their portion of the state liability that will be on their books. But the thing that's kind of troubling about it, it's not like you can pay it down. It's not like you can do anything about it. You're not really even in control of it. But the GASB believes it's so important that everybody be aware of the coming economic earthquake. Something needs to be done with these numbers that you ultimately are going to have to pay, or employers, employees are going to have to contribute more, or the plan provisions, what retirees are given is going to be less, that they want it to be recorded and reflected going forward. So again, just keep that in mind, and we'll be probably talking about that a little bit more in the coming months and years. All right, wanted to mention, from a compliance standpoint, you know, we try to look at whether we see any deficiencies or findings in your processes, in the performance of compliance with state laws. We did not come across anything that we deemed was significant this year. No findings, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. We look at your federal awards, and the two major programs that we looked at this year was the Community Development Block Grant, and we looked at the Department of Justice Cluster. There's like 14 compliance requirements. And we look at the direct and material compliance requirements, and we make sure, are you complying with federal law and with those grants? The management letter, I did want to let you know, you're going to get a copy of this report afterwards. We didn't want you to want to start reading it before because we knew you'd be so excited about it. But you, inside that report, there'll be a management letter. And the management letter is just some required communications, just saying, if we came across anything, we needed to tell you about it. And there's really nothing of significance in that letter, other than the fact that we implemented GASB 63 this year. Remember, talking about net position versus net assets? That was pretty much it. There's no other really significant things of note in that letter. All right, wanted to remind you for the last time, three times, they say, you always remember it, the best opinion you can get is an unmodified opinion. You have good financial condition. You know, you have a lot of challenges here. Your revenues didn't just shoot up like some of the other, you know, other cities or districts, but you managed what you had well. And so that's, you know, all you can do is deal with the cards that you have in hand. Any questions? I know I went quick. Any questions on the financials on the PowerPoint? I know you just want me to be gone. I know, I know how this works.
No, I think we did have a meeting where the council looked at revenues and the finance committee we listened to. I know David did this in 20 minutes, but we spent well over an hour on the presentation and questions were asked. I think a lot of the questions were part of it centered around pension, our pension and what we've got to do there and make changes. But I don't know if anybody else on finance wants to speak to anything. Good. Thank you, David.
All right, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Our minutes of our November 25th meeting have been distributed. Are there any questions or additions to that, to those minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve?
No.
First by Mr. Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor, sigh. Opposed? The minutes of November 25th passed unanimously. We have a couple of items of old business, and the first item is request consideration of an ordinance to rezone 907 North Main Street and adjacent parking lot from NC Neighborhood Commercial to GC General Commercial. Ms. McConnell?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this particular rezoning request is being asked for because the potential tenant in this office building is a radio station. Now, bear in mind that radio station by itself is a permitted use in the Neighborhood Commercial zoning district, but the associated uses with that include a broadcast antenna. The broadcast antenna, in order to be allowable, needs to be in an appropriately zoned category of general commercial. What we do know a little bit more than you heard at the last meeting is the proposed antenna will be located on the roof of the building. This is the office building that houses Sun Trust and other offices within that, within that building. And the antenna is supposed to be 20 feet in height, and it does have three parabolic disc, satellite dishes that are affixed to it. One of the questions last time had also included if the, because this rezoning request includes not just this property where the primary building sits, it also includes the lot at the corner of Blackley and Main, excuse me, Blackley and Murray, which is in the same ownership. So the antenna is not to be located on that corner, but on the roof of the building. And your building department will, at the appropriate time, certainly be reviewing in more detail things such as wind loads and other matters that would be applicable should you choose to rezon this. This was heard at the December Planning Commission meeting, and there were no comments from the public in regard to this, and the Planning Commission recommended approval. Mr. McKenzie is here in the audience if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Ms. Stewart and then Mr. Lockridge.
Maurice, do you, do you know if there's any way that the applicant could mount the antennas to the side of the Sun Trust building and then paint it to match the color? That way, it won't be so intrusive on top of the building. That's what we're seeing a lot in the telecommunications industry.
That's a possibility. We can pass that along to them. At this moment, they're, we're looking at the roof area just to make sure it had the appropriate communication between that and whatever they needed to communicate with. But we can pass that along and see. They have not submitted any plans yet to the building department, so that's one option they could certainly entertain.
And then you know if there's any associated equipment that's going to go on the roof as well with that?
All they mentioned was a mast arm type, you know, a single pole, about 20 feet in height, and three small dishes attached to it. And that's, that's all they have mentioned to us so far.
And with it being one of the downtown buildings, it'd just be a lot less intrusive to look at if you could mount it maybe on the corner. If there was just one, find where you get the best reception and put it on that corner of that building with a mount and then paint it to match, you know, whatever the existing outside of the building is.
Exterior material. We can certainly pass that along to them. They, they plan to get everything submitted to us in the next couple of weeks, the next council meetings.
Maybe between first and second.
Right, the next meeting's not until January, so that's what they were planning on doing. So we should have a lot more information at the January meeting.
Thank you.
If everything is going to be on the Sun Trust building, why is it necessary to change the property of the corner of Blackley and Murray?
It's in the same ownership, and they put it in the application. I spoke to the applicant, it's not required. They don't necessarily have to have it changed. So that's certainly up to you.
I did fail to mention that on the roof that Maurice was describing, there is a structure on the roof now, a cupola-type structure that's on the roof. So there is a protrusion on that rooftop now. You might not remember that, but it is.
Mr. Roberts, and then Ms. Curvin.
Is this, the radio station now is in the county?
Yes, sir.
In the city, so we'll be gaining taxes.
Taxes, exactly, in that building.
Potential for that, yes.
Great.
Just clarification, we're talking about these different options on how the antenna would be actually structured. And Mr. Stewart brought up, you know, one, but once we change the zoning, then really any, they can do anything they want to as far, as long as it meets the other requirements that we would have.
That's correct. In our zoning ordinance, we have a section on communications towers. And as long as it meets those guidelines, which it's a very broad.
And the thing on the top, 20 feet on top with the three dishes, that would be okay?
Absolutely, yes.
That's what we got.
I didn't know what our zoning ordinance said, you know, a lot of ordinance, you know, gets that specifics, hey, if you're going to mount antennas, here's your first option we want you to look at, then putting it on top of the roof would be a second. I just didn't know what our ordinance calls.
Yeah, there's a lot of specifics there. Things about co-location, if it's attached to a building, it discusses, you know, the height in relation to the actual height of the building. If it's a standalone structure, it can be a certain height. So there's a lot of different aspects to what you can do.
My only point was that, you know, it's fine to pass that on as a suggestion, but that's basically all it is at that point.
Right. And they, they did mention that they don't want something like this to take away from the attractive nature of the building now. So I expect they will look at every possible option. They don't want it to be the main feature on the building. They don't want it to be the main feature on the building.
One thing I would suggest, knowing what I just heard, is, once this one goes, I would ask that we take a look at our ordinance and maybe redo our telecommunication ordinance to, because if not, it could really, our downtown is looking great, but you wouldn't want to just see a bunch of antennas sticking up on top of the building.
Right.
As we're going down Main Street.
Right.
So we might want to refine and restructure how we situate our antennas.
Yeah.
And give you some information on.
And those guidelines were drawn up in 1996 because of all the large towers, we started getting cell towers. And as you know, in your industry, that things have changed in terms of technology, so it would be good to revisit that.
Any other questions, comments?
One other question. Based on my first question, did the owner of the radio station say anything about what might in the future be built on that other section of land across the street from the...
Actually, the property will not change hands. The radio station, if they go in there, they will just be occupants and be leasing the building.
They'd be a tenant in the building.
Yes.
No, I'm not talking about the Sun Trust building. I'm talking about that other piece of property.
Right. It's the same ownership. It will not change hands. The radio station will have.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, did they mention to you anything about what might be put on that piece of property?
No. It's to be remaining as is, from what we understand.
Anything else? Thank you, Ms. McKenzie.
Now, this is a definite that they're going there based upon rezoning. What happens if, I guess, it just get rezoned if they decide not to come there?
Well, this is your first reading, so I, as far as our information is concerned, their potential tenant for the radio station is potential. They've not signed on the dotted line based upon your action to make it an allowable use. So I think this is a step in the right direction. We can certainly ask for any additional updates on the status of that occupancy and be happy to have that for you after tonight's meeting.
Mr. Roberts?
I make a motion we pass it on first reading.
First by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Harbin. Further discussion?
Well, I'd just like to make the point that, you know, this is, this property is in the middle of the downtown. I mean, it's general commercial. I mean, I don't see why anybody's worried about it. It'd be probably great if they would build something on that corner. And we had, you know, it's in an appropriate space to be general commercial, so I don't see any problem with that.
Further discussion? All those in favor, sigh?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously on the first reading. Second item of old business, request second and third reading of ordinance 13-16 establishing the 2014 generalization. Ms. McConnell?
We do have an election scheduled for April the 8th for the seats for mayors and seats 1, 3, 5, and at-large seat 7. The ordinance that's attached to your agenda tonight establishes all of the various dates concerning the election and the filing period for candidates being noon Thursday, January the 23rd to noon Thursday, February the 6th. The process is initiated actually at the registration and elections office, and then the payment of fee is here at City Hall.
It passed unanimously on the first reading. Any comments, discussion?
I'm voting passing on the second reading.
First by Mr. Lockridge, second by Mr. Stewart. All those in favor, sigh?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously on the second reading.
Make a motion we pass it on third and final reading.
First by Mr. Stewart.
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor, sigh?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously on the third and final reading. We have a couple items of new business. Our first item is request consideration to purchase capital equipment for the beautification and recreation departments. Ms. McConnell?
Mr. Mayor, this is new business, but it is information that both the Recreation Committee and the Downtown Committees have heard before, and you heard part of it again in your administrative briefing last meeting. This is a list of seven pieces of equipment totaling $47,000, which would be funded through your hospitality fund. And this is primarily in order to operate and maintain the tourism and recreation generators that, that staff feels is necessary in terms of both replacing equipment and adding equipment to our rec, to the Recreation and Parks Department. You'll see on here, this is a combination of lawn mowers, it's a vacuum system, a walk-behind aerator, a gator, a deck mower with a bagger and a 16-foot trailer. Obviously, we have a lot of things on the ground out there that we're very proud of, and we want to make sure that we have the right equipment, both in terms of it's the aging fleet, some of this is replacing equipment and some is new equipment. Just as a point of reference, you heard in some of the audit comments tonight that our hospitality collections, we budget 172, almost 173,000 per month. Those collections are tracking very well. So at the end of November, you had more than a million dollars in your hospitality fund. Mr. Bevel is here tonight, if you need any additional information. Your bid information is attached, so it shows that we do have the low bidder in each case, with the exception of the walk-behind aerator, which is a sole source purchased. The only vendor who carries lawn air equipment is located in Sandy Springs.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. McConnell and Mr. Bevel?
I just have one.
Mr. Chapman?
The only, only question I have is, is what are the typical warranties on these, on the, on the mowers? Because, you know, they're fairly expensive. What kind of warranties do they extend to us?
Most of them is a two-year warranty. The Hustler is a two-year warranty. The X-Mart is a one-year warranty on certain parts and a two-year warranty on other parts. So it sort of varies.
Any other questions, comments?
I move that we adopt this.
First by Ms. Lockridge. Second by Dr. Thompson. Further discussion? All those in favor, sigh?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
To purchase your equipment. Thank you, Mr. Bevel. Our next item's request consideration of appointment to the Downtown Development Commission. Ms. McConnell?
The Downtown Development Commission serve as advocates and advisors to the council. A lot of this has to do with economic development and economic growth, and also kind of the sense of place within your downtown. We've been very fortunate to have people who are willing to volunteer their time and assist Arlene and you on our various endeavors downtown. One of the vacancies has been in the major industry area, and we're fortunate to have Pat Saquintas from Piedmont Natural Gas, who has expressed her willingness to serve, and she would be, I believe, an asset to this group. And we submit her name in recommendation to fill that spot. It is a three-year term running through June 30th of 2016.
Great. Piedmont Natural Gas has been a great supporter of the city. Any comments, questions? Mr. Roberts?
Mr. Mayor, I've known Pat for a good many years. We've done a lot of work for Piedmont Natural Gas over the years, and I find her to be a fine person, so I recommend we.
First by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Curvin. Further discussion? All those in favor, sigh?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Appreciate her serving on our Downtown Development Commission. Administrative briefing, Ms. McConnell?
We do have one additional vacancy that we need to fill that is on the Municipal Election Commission. That commission only has three people on it. They do serve six-year terms, but please don't let that scare anybody off from service. We do have an election every two years, so it's not an intensive appointment. The term that we are looking to fill has, was previously filled by Thomas Cozel, and he has expressed a desire to step down from that position due to other obligations. His term expires December the 31st of 13, so this would be a new six-year term. And we would hope that if there are, if any of you know anyone who's interested in serving on this commission, we would welcome that. So we'll put this on your next agenda. In the meantime, if you have any suggestions, please let us know.
Think Art will make a good candidate.
I do, too.
Well, great. Anything else, Ms. McConnell?
Just upcoming events, and you have a number of things in this busy month of December. Next week, excuse me, this Wednesday, the Public Safety Committee meets at noon, and then our employee Christmas lunch is on Thursday. Thursday, you're going to get fed well on Thursday. You have lunch, and again, you meet with the Anderson County Municipal Association meeting that evening in Pendleton. The following week, on the 17th, we have a Neighborhood and Housing Committee meeting, and on the 18th, we'll have our second dine and delve meetings where we get into deeper information about trends and, and things having to do with our financial picture. Then we move into the Christmas week, where we, offices will be closed on Tuesday, the 24th, and then closed for Christmas Day, and again on January the 1st.
I'd like to add, there's one other event on the 11th, which is Wednesday. I had the privilege of going to one of them this past week. The City Fire Department has their awards program, I guess, for their firefighters who get different awards and throughout the year. And I think it's B shift is having their dinner at 5:30 this Thursday, I mean, this Wednesday as well. So if you get a chance to go to it, I'm sure they'd be glad to see you there. It's a very good program this past, I think it was a Monday or Friday, this past Friday when we went there for A shift.
Thank you. 5 o'clock, 5:30?
5:30.
Great.
At the fire department.
Thank you. Executive session?
We do have a couple of matters of contractual matter and economic development matters that we would like to cover with you in executive session. I do not anticipate any items that will need action upon your return.
Great. Ms. Harbin?
I just want to take a real quick second to thank Peggy and the job that her staff did for the audit that was presented earlier tonight. I know it's certainly not a lot of fun to be audited, but congratulate her on the response we got, and please pass along to the rest of your staff. Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. First by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor, sigh?
Aye.
Opposed? We. I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session. First by Mr. Harbin, second by Mr. Stewart. All those in favor, sigh?
Aye.
We stand our executive session. During executive session, the council was giving, given an update on a contractual matter in regards to Highway 28 bypass water project. The scope of work could change in that project, and the staff will bring back a possible conclusion to that scope of work in the near future. Under the economic development part of it, again, the council was briefed on several projects in regards to economic development. Economic development is a slow-moving thing, and we will continue to get updates as they develop. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, could I say something?
Yes, sir.
This is for all the members of council. We wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I don't think we're going to be meeting until after that, but we wish everybody in the city a Merry Christmas as well. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Make a motion to adjourn.
First by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor, sigh?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.